4:03. Do we have any announcements?
I did not receive anything.
Any public comment?
Nope.
Okay. Did everyone have the opportunity to review the meeting minutes from January 26th?
I have not finished those and sent those out yet. I apologize that that hasn't been completed.
No worries. Moving forward, new items for consideration. First off, we have a new committee member, Michael Ward. He is a good buddy of mine, eats, sleeps, drinks golf. He's in the industry. He's a self-diagnosed golfaholic, correct?
Yeah, he has spent a little bit of time thinking about golf, that's for sure.
Awesome. Well, if you guys don't mind, committee members can kind of go around and introduce ourselves, let them know how long we've been a part of this. And we can start with Michael. Michael, what do you do? Where do you play? Yeah, take it away, man.
Yeah, first and foremost, you know, some familiar faces on here, some not so familiar. Appreciate the intro and the opportunity to kind of be here and listen more than anything. My name's Michael Ward, you know, longtime Wichita guy. I grew up, you know, living out of the game of golf on all the golf courses in this city. So I'm partial to Mac Park. Many evenings, many early mornings out there. I spent many days at what was now, or what is now Twin Lakes Golf Course, which goes out on McConnell Air Force Base. So it's not a city course, but I hold a special place in my heart for public golf and a lot of fond memories. And what do I do? So, you know, I have a real job. I do work in corporate America, you know, and that's what pays my bills. But I come home and, you know, one of my hobbies, I guess, and second job is I run a golf brand called Low Side Golf Wear. And we sell golf apparel all over the country, in some instances, all over the world, both American and industry golf. So I've been exposed to a lot of people in the golf world, you know, starting here locally at a local level and all the way out to a national level. And I'm a big believer in the relationship of the game of golf, Oscars. And I'm kind of living proof of that at the same time. And I look forward to a little more as we get going.
Awesome. Thanks, Michael. We'll go down the list here. Dale, you want to go next?
Sure. I'm Dale Goerter. I'm a retired journalist and government relations manager for the City of Wichita. Play a lot of golf, involved with a lot of the public groups that play on the public courses during the weekend, the weekend. And I look forward to your involvement, Michael. We have a lot of work ahead of us. I've become increasingly concerned about that the voice of public golf is not adequately represented in discussions that have gone on currently and in the past, and hope this group evolves into a group that understands public golf and the unique role it plays in our community.
Let's see, Nancy?
I'm Nancy Knopf, and this is my second GAC meeting, so I'm not much ahead of you, Michael. I grew up playing golf in Salina and played golf in college and had a family and married a man without being a golfer. So I play golf when and where I can. And I'm part of Business Women's Golf League that's been in Wichita for over thirty-five years, I think. And we play at Mac right now. I also played at Twin Lakes, part of, I work at the VA, and that was where we played for a number of years. And we shut that down. And then my Business Women's group played at Echo Hills, and we shut that down. And then we moved to Brayburn, and we shut that down. And then we moved to Clap and shut that down. So I hope we, I mean, it really does sound like we are the kiss of death, but I'm hoping that trend has changed now that we're at McDonald.
Good track record, yeah.
Hey Penny, real quick, Richard Shodorf just texted me saying he doesn't have the invite, or if you can send that to him again, that'd be...
Yeah, I'm sending that to him now.
Thank you. Let's go, Niall.
Good afternoon. I've been on the golf committee now for, I think, since December, maybe November. I can't remember exactly. Prior to that, I was on the golf advisory committee back in 2008, 2009. Been a member of the Sims Men's Club for quite a few years. And like everyone else, I'm very interested in maintaining and promoting public golf and making sure that we have that resource in our community.
Thanks, Niall. Thanks, Niall. I don't think Kyle Ellison is on this meeting. If he is, speak now or forever, hold your peace. Kyle is with the Real Men, Real Heroes group here in town. Fantastic personality. Young golfer with a young family. Here comes Richard. Really good dude on the board. So I'm excited with the direction that this committee is headed. Looks like Richard just joined us. Richard, we're going through introductions. Are you ready to introduce yourself to our new committee member?
Sure. This is Richard Shodorf. I'm the general counsel for Security First Title and been on the board since, you know, I can't remember, five, six years?
Pretty good on short notice there, Richard. I'm Eddie Farnestock. I'm the chairman of this committee. I believe it's been, I've been on this committee for three years. I think I've chaired it for the last year and a half or so. You know, really love golf, the game of golf. I worked at Key Construction as a business development specialist, so I bring a certain aspect of business to the table as well. Golfed in college, grew up on a golf course, just eat, sleep, pray golf. So, yeah, that's a little bit about me. So, everybody, welcome. Michael, glad to have you aboard.
Good to see you, Michael.
Get started.
Yeah, appreciate it, guys.
All right. Let's move on to item B, February rounds report. Believe those were sent out a couple of days ago. Who will be giving this report? I don't think Richard will be. It looks like he's on a golf course somewhere. That's good.
Does everybody have a copy of it?
Is there any staff on this meeting?
Yep.
Yeah.
Ask you to do it.
Colin and I are here. This is Keith.
So Shanna's not here, Troy, or...
Well, Troy, no. Mr. Houghton said he couldn't attend the meeting. Of course Hendrix is not available, and I'm not sure about Shanna.
Shanna's not here either, so Steve, you want to take it?
Yeah, I can.
Thank you.
Looking at the, you might have to turn your volume up, Steve. Oh, great. That'll be better.
Go ahead, Steve.
Okay, sorry.
We got you a little bit. Just talk real loud.
I will. Looks like they sent the rounds. No revenue. It looks like most courses are up so far for the month and also for the year. Another slight increase. Again, it's like probably related to the weather, which is so good. February, we took a little bit of a hit. But other than that, I would guess revenues would be up at all four courses.
Does everybody have a copy of that report?
Yes, I believe so.
Okay, yeah. You can, you can see the increases and a slight decrease over the year to date. And the month comparison looks, well, Mac jumped up, but everybody else was a little lax, a little bit of a gyp.
Those are good numbers. And one of the questions that has been asked by, I know Mark Manning in his fourth quarter report to the council on Tuesday, but those are good numbers. But the question is, is it sustainable? It looks like from this first couple of months at least, it's a short sample, that it looks like the growth and the enthusiasm we saw for golf last year is sustained at this point. Those are good numbers for January. And now we're heading into two months when the clubs, the courses were closed. So there should be even a sharper increase noted compared to 2020 going forward. So those are good numbers.
Yep. Any questions for the February rounds report? Okay.
Eddie, it would be useful in the future, those rounds are good. I'd like to see also a breakdown of member rounds played versus regular green fees paid. So we have in a sense, it's a rounds revenue report. There's no revenue report with this. Money is the final answer. Rounds are great, but that's not the final determinant. So to get a grasp of where we are with our membership program on a monthly basis, seeing that breakdown. And along with that, the concessions, cart rental, I mean, we've put so much focus on rounds, and that's just not, I mean, that's great, but this is, there's a bigger picture, obviously. We need to consider going forward. So for the next report, it'd be great to see that information included.
Yeah. And that might, we might be able to hit on that in the next item, item C, the financials. If those are available, I have IF available on here. So it's kind of hard to do this without a golf director, but does anybody have the January financials and would like to present those?
I do not.
Who was the gal that was on the last meeting that said she would have those for us through February?
Was that Shanna?
I think it might have been Emma with the account for the...
From the finance department.
Emma?
I don't think we have any finance.
Emma, are you with us?
Can you hear me okay? Sorry, I had to go figure my kid. I'm actually driving. Sorry about that. So I, last time I heard, I thought we were waiting for Mark Manning to present financials. That's why, because I think financials for Park Board. And then I was going to do last meeting for Park Board, but that's only for recreation department. And for golf, I was as understanding as Mark Manning was going to present at one point. But let me check with Mr. Houghton, see what he thinks. And if he feels comfortable with it, I can present financials like in like three days.
Okay, that's fine. I don't believe Mr. Manning is with us today, so we can move forward. I'm going to guess that, you know, with rounds up, doing, we're doing okay. That's my non-professional opinion without looking at anything in front of me. So if we can have that ready to go for the next meeting, I don't know when that falls exactly, but ideally, we can go through January and February and possibly March if it gets into April, or we have March available at this time. You can go over those with Mr. Manning or Emma. So we can move forward.
Eddie, did we establish we're going to be meeting monthly going forward? I know we scheduled this one as a special meeting because of that, the bylaws.
I can't remember if we voted on that or not, Dale. That might be a legal question, or Penny.
We did not vote on that at the last Park Board meeting. We cut it short before we got to that.
Does that need to take place at a Park Board meeting?
Yes, the bylaws have to be amended by the Park Board in order to have official meetings, and that's on the agenda for Monday.
Okay, perfect. Yeah, my understanding that we will meet monthly moving forward, this group. So that'll be confirmed Monday, it sounds like. All right. Item D, 2020 year end financials, IF available.
I guess it could be a short meeting.
I talked to Troy a few days ago.
Which Troy?
Houghton, sorry. I know we have so many Troyes across the park department, Troy Houghton. And he said that Mr. Manning made a presentation to the city council on Tuesday, and I wasn't able to join or to go, but it sounded like golf was up $500,000 last year.
Yeah, he told me the same thing, Eddie, just there ago on the phone. Five hundred thousand, yeah.
So that's, that's pretty good. We're moving in the right direction. Obviously, there are some things that we need to do to continue to move this thing in the right direction. And, you know, with that, if the pros want to talk about their wish list, I know we all, we got that yesterday, maybe. And I went through it.
Before we get there, if I may just add, we were $500,000 down after they shut us down. So we actually were in the black for a million.
That's a good point. So did anyone have any comments or questions for our pros here about their wish list items? I went, I went over it last, last night, and I saw some really eye-opening things, mainly about equipment that needs to be updated, some as much as 20 years old. There are some really good recommendations. So if anyone had a comment or question, now's the time.
You know, I think, I had mentioned something about preparing to change the fleet. The carts, the new carts that we got in are now going into their fourth season. And tonight I was out cleaning a couple of carts, and I noticed the seats are beginning to crack. Body panels are scratched, broken, that kind of thing. So I just don't want to get into the same situation we had where we hang on to these carts for 13, 15 years.
Right.
Eddie, I was encouraged to see that list as well, but I wondered if it would be timely to put off discussion of that till we have established what our operational model's going to look like, because we'll be talking to ourselves essentially, we're going to have to make the same case. Somebody, we have no particular leadership right now. It's in a transition moment. Big, big decisions to be made in the next couple of weeks, which will affect the ability to execute any of these and as far as where the responsibility would fall to do that. So, I mean, we can talk about it, but I don't see the, really the value of doing it now, because they're going to have to do it again in front of a responsible party.
Sure.
Which should happen fairly soon. So I'm encouraged. That was great work by the pros. I mean, I suggested that, asked that report. That was a great response. There's a lot of material there to go forward with, and at some point, perhaps a, you know, someday we can sit down together and go through that. It's a great starting point to redirect where we're going. But there are other big issues as well that will come forward. And I'd just suggest we wait till we have a more relevant audience.
I hear you. Yeah, that's a, that's a good point. One thing I will mention, I saw on here, I think at all four courses, they, they mentioned the single rider issue. When I talked to Troy a couple of days ago, he mentioned that they plan on going back to normal tomorrow. Is that correct?
Yes, yes.
Fantastic.
I mean, I did have, I'm talking, I'm sorry, Nancy, quickly, the, I talked to a couple of courses during the week, and I understand that the timing is bad right now. We're supposed to be hiring our seasonal help, the people you need to run the courses for the summer, and that's locked up right now. And there's going to be in the next couple of weeks, kind of a crisis of sorts. Eeration schedules have to be put into place, and right now, there is nobody being hired at a time when there would have been previous years. So I don't know how, I don't know who we're talking to right now, but it'd be useful. I know the pros have limited ability to make things happen right now. I don't know who's making things happen, but they need to get the seasonal worker issue moving forward. Maybe somebody will listen to this at some point, but is that not right, Keith?
That's probably the number one issue right now. We're kind of getting into the shoulder season where we don't have high schoolers available yet, you know, for extended shifts. So, yeah, we're, especially with us not having assistance. So the workload is extreme at this point.
But I'm worried the quality of the courses is going to suffer if we don't, if you're not addressing...
The maintenance side, too.
Yeah. So, all right. I hope somebody's listening to that and that moves forward. We'll know by, if our next meeting is in fact April, the first day of April, by then, I hope that's resolved.
Question, and that is, when you say we're going back to normal, what is normal?
Two people per cart.
And is that square with the, has the county changed the distance, the social distance rule?
I'm not sure what the county's done.
The flyer that went out, masks are still required by staff and people in the golf shop, where you're at 75% of capacity in each golf shop. And it is two riders per cart unless you choose to pay for the full cart to ride single.
But that is square with the county?
What's that?
Did we clear that with the county's COVID policy?
I don't know. It was just sent out to the pros from Shanna, so that would be a question for downtown.
Okay, I'll call them, because I just want to make sure we're in compliance with that, because that's what we need to do, whatever. So I'll call them.
I'm assuming that that's where they, they took their lead from, was from probably county.
Yeah, we'll get those posted tomorrow.
I'll pick that up. I'll call them tomorrow morning. Because I looked at the, came out with, and I didn't see where that was changed at the county level.
It would seem like if you're going to go to that policy, that a mask policy, two people in the cart is too close. Unless, you know, I'm going to get my second shot on Monday, and I'm going to be comfortable riding with anybody at that point a couple of weeks later. But meanwhile, forcing people into a compromise of that social distance thing isn't really a good thing. But, and I don't understand the rush right now. You can, we can, we're getting really close. I mean, our president says we're going to get everybody vaccinated by end of May, so they're going to kill us financially to wait a little bit on that. Is there a way that perhaps as a body, we might suggest, and Richard's point's well taken, it might not even be consistent with the county policy. I suspect it's, nobody's going to make a stink over it. But I, I, I mean, I know we're not in peak season yet. Why not wait till perhaps 1st of May to put that policy into place? There may be a financial element compromise briefly, relatively minor, considering we're talking about, we're at a point where we're trying to assess whether there is a risk of a second surge, that kind of thing. We don't know. But why not be a little bit cautious for the next 30, 60 days? And to that end, I'd make a motion, if it's timely, that this group recommend that the one-person rider policy stay in place at least for another month and reevaluate at that point. Second.
I would, I would just amend it to say that we asked the doctor, and that's to give us some guidance on that.
I'd accept that. That's a good amendment, and they could make that a part of the April assessment we get there. That's a good point. Still second.
All right, we've got a motion and a second. And I'll start the discussion here. So we asked the pros last month to give us their wish list, and I don't know, I'm not exactly sure. Let me preface this by saying, I'm not exactly sure where we are or where the city is getting their information. It could be the county, it could be the CDC. I'm not sure. They, in my opinion, have deemed it safe enough, because the numbers are way down, to ride in the same cart. And we asked these pros last month to come up with a wish list, which they've done. And every single one of them, I believe, have said, the wear and tear on the carts and the golf courses are getting out of hand with single rider golf carts. We need to go back to two. And now we're making a motion here to say, no, forget what you guys want. Let's, let's, let's be safe. Let's, you know, I, I don't understand it. If, if somebody is saying that it's safe enough to ride with two people, and our golf pros are asking us to, to ride two people in one golf cart to save our golf courses, save time, we're talking about staffing or lack thereof, I, I'm not, I can't get behind that. So I can't support that.
Eddie, when, when you say that, that somebody has deemed it safe to put two people in the car, is that, is that coming from, from the city health department, from, from the county health department, from...
That's...
Just, just a point of reference, when you, when you quote that, who are you quoting?
I'm not quoting anybody, but when they, they send out a flyer to our golf staff saying, "We can now ride with two people," somebody has to have deemed that safe in some capacity. Do you agree?
Well, just, just to note, just to note, who is "they"? Who sent that out?
I believe our pros can answer that.
We received it from downtown golf division. Shanna sent out a flyer. So Mr. Houghton knows about it, Shanna knows about it. And the thing about it is that you can look outside and every, you know, the guys that want to ride single, they're on every tee and every green within six feet of each other without masks.
Yeah, other area courses are two and two to a cart. And then we sent out a survey to our golfers, and 60% of them said they only took the single rider carts because it was convenient, not health issues.
Okay, but let me, let me throw this out. We are under a mandate. It isn't optional. If the, if the mandate says we can do it, that's fine. If it doesn't, then we have problems. We, we have to follow the law. It isn't an option. And so the question is, did the county change their ruling? Because, or is the city saying that they are no longer going to be under the county ruling? And, and there may be a city opt out, that I don't know of. I know there's a county opt out. But as far as I know, Sedgwick County's still determined, and Dr., the doctor at the, the dean at the medical school is the one that issues it. And he issued one about two weeks ago. And let me go back and, and look at it, and then I will call the KU Medical School, and, and then I will call the city and try to determine where we are.
And, you know, everybody's going to have the option. If they want to ride single, they just pay for the full cart, so.
That's a great point.
They can fill this.
We're not, we're not ready... We're not, we're not ready to sell, sell health like that. That'd be a bad idea. If the pros are ready to take the scientific position that it's safe to ride in a cart, then that's, they're out of their league there. If it's a matter of money because you're running the carts down, that's just the wrong reason. We got a month. Why, why not, Richard's points well taken. Let us research. The people who understand this are the folks who understand the science. And I'm sorry Keith, it's not the same. I played golf in this pandemic for a freaking year now in paranoia about if I'm gonna get the virus. I am feeling pretty safe on a green and on a tee box as opposed to being, sitting one foot away from another person. I don't go in the tee box and stand next to somebody as close as I do in a golf cart. That never happens on the green. That's just common sense. We've used common sense and golf has prospered because common sense was used. Let's just give it, Eddie, I understand that passion people have to, let's pretend it isn't there and let's just go forward and everything's fine. Let's not do that. Let's just, regardless, Eddie, you know, we, we, I'm with you. Eddie, I want to be with you. I want to, I want to get to where you are. I want to get to where you are. I just don't think it's there right now. So a month isn't gonna hurt us. It's not a big financial compromise. Those carts aren't gonna fall apart in a month because we've had one person. And if we come back when we're comfortable that we're meeting all those guidelines as Richard's talked about, it just seems prudent at this point.
Penny, can you look into that and, and then send an email out of where that came from?
I'm sorry?
I was asking Penny if she could look into where the mandate came from, where Shanna got her information.
Yeah, I can, I can check into it, but I'm sure it came from Houtman, but I'll, I'll confirm that tomorrow when everybody's back in the office.
Alrighty.
Well, this committee is just making a recommendation to the park board, which is the one that's gonna be the, the one that, as I read the bylaws. We're gonna, we're reporting to the park board, our recommendation as to this issue. Maybe by Monday, more information will be available. Maybe the park board will have some information that will verify that this is safe or not. But from my perspective, I, I agree with Dale that we've come pretty far. We've, we've dealt with a lot to get to this point. And just waiting one more month if that's the park board's wish, wouldn't, I don't see this is gonna break the bank or necessarily gonna be able to.
And I gotta just reinforce that. Here's the problem, Niall. They're gonna put this policy into effect tomorrow. So the, the city puts a policy into effect without running it by these bodies we have that are arguably here to be a sounding board. And this is a big one. This is, this is an important issue. It's, and Eddie's passion for doing that, I understand that Eddie, I'm with you. I want to get past this and go back to normal, but when we're talking about a policy change, if we have a role as a golf advisory committee and Mike, listen in here because this is where, where we are right now. We've got, either we're gonna step up and be something or we're just, we're just a handmade into the staff. This is an important question. It would be relevant for the golf advisory committee's recommendation to go to the park board. The park board to act on it and make a recommendation to council before it is enacted. That just seems to be common sense.
I, I just have a quick question. And I said I was gonna listen as much as anything, which is exactly what I'm trying to do. Is the, is the single cart rider a mandate? So if I come and play with anybody that I bring, is the single cart rider mandatory that if I'm in a twosome or a foursome with myself and three other people I know that we're all in an individual cart? Or is it purely an option?
It, it's a deal where if you're with somebody from the same household, you can be on the same cart. If you choose to ride a single cart, that's, that's up to you. If you choose to ride with somebody, that's entirely up to you also, but.
Is it only limited to household or does, what, what happens if I bring a friend of mine who lives in Texas?
If you feel comfortable riding with that friend, yes, you can do that.
It's the option. We, we give people the option and we talk about common sense here. If they feel comfortable enough, I think you know, everyone can make their own decisions. Everyone here are adults.
And, and that's the point that I was and I'll just say this from a different perspective. I mean, you know, I've played golf with plenty of strangers and, you know, maybe that's a different approach than playing golf with, you know, my buddies that I know. I think common sense is a word that would use that. I think that's important and discretion. I mean, you know, I think discretion by the, the player in the environment, you know, that they're comfortable with it is an important thing and letting people decide. I mean, you know, there, somebody's circumstances are certainly different than mine. And, and we, you know, all have to make our own decision based off what we're comfortable with. And that's where I think that discretion piece, you know, is important and I'm not sure $2 or $3 or $5 is or is not too much to ask. But, but I, I think discretion and, and kind of individual decisions are important right here.
What I was trying to go with was, if, if somebody is not comfortable with it, they will do that. They will pay for the extra cart or they will wear their mask while they're golfing. You know, and my perspective is maybe a little jaded just because I've had my vaccine for two months, so I'm ready to go. But, you know, like I said, I'm wearing this eight hours a day. And I could wear it on the golf course too, if it would make my cart partner feel more comfortable. So I'll do that.
Okay, if I could share one anecdotal evidence is not good, but let me tell you what happened in my five some. We took five folks to Cary Park in Hutchinson about a month ago. At when it was right after, when the snow hit Wichita, but it didn't hit Hutchinson, we went and played there. We had five guys. We played 18 holes. We rode individual carts. The next day, one of our members got sick. And told us that he had, he had, he tested positive. I was pretty nervous because as close as I got to him was paying off the debts at the end of the round, which I always had to pay unfortunately, but nonetheless, that was as close as I got. But three of us immediately went out and got tested. Fortunately, we didn't get the virus. Had we been forced into riding together, that circumstance could have been largely different. Again, sure, we can pay the extra money and get the cart and do that, but that isn't why that one person per cart rule evolved. It wasn't financial. It was to encourage people to be safe. That example shows if you do it, you are creating a scenario where some folks may be exposed when they didn't have to be. It's a freaking month. Let's just give it a month and come back and, and while wholeheartedly endorse going back to two persons a cart when we see a little more science. As Richard said, the authority on this is Dr. Mims. Let's take a month and think about it.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second on the table. Is there any further discussion? Is that Richard?
Yes, I will also survey all of the country clubs and the private courses. And I will send everybody notice tomorrow.
And that's good due diligence for making a decision in April as to whether we should do it or not. We'll have more, more concrete evidence at our, our disposal and we'll make a good decision at that point. This is not making a good decision if we do it without that information.
Telling people what they should and shouldn't do is a good decision, Dale. I think people can make their own decision. That's where, that's where I stand and have always stood. I'm not acting like this thing isn't here. I've lost friends to this thing. So I know it's here. I've taken this thing very seriously. But it's one's own discretion, what they want to do. If they feel safe riding in the golf cart, if they're immune, if they've got their second vaccine, whatever it may be, go for it.
But Eddie, 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 the irresponsibility of other people affects me.
If you're not comfortable with it, you've got the option to ride alone. That's all I'm saying. That's where I'm standing and
and guys, at this point.
We can take a vote if there's no further discussion.
At this point, we've been mandated to go ahead and do it tomorrow.
Right, so it'll be interesting to see tomorrow, how many people actually complain about it or how many people actually pay the extra amount. I would be willing to bet though, that probably no one pays the extra amount, but maybe one or two. We'll, we'll see after tomorrow. If there is a lot of backlash, then we can, we can revisit that on, on Monday.
There is a liability issue here also. Just so you know. If it turns out that the county has not, has not agreed to this, we shut down for the wrong reasons when we could have run a safe operation. And if we are forcing people together and they do get sick, and I know we're saying you can pay more, but the mandate is going back to the county is, we have to. It's not an option. We did not opt out of the, of the protocols from the county. It's a, it's a mandate. And, and again, the county may have changed it. If they did, I missed it in the last big, and the last thing that Dr. Menace put out, he changed the, the situation for room. He, he put a lot of things in there, but I did not see the six foot change. And if it, if it is not changed, and as I said, I will find out. But if it's not changed, then we're, we're incurring a serious liability problem if somebody gets COVID.
Good. Is there any further discussions? Okay, we can take roll. I believe Dale's motion was stated basically saying that he wants to move it, move the single rider cart mandate back a month, correct Dale?
Well, I'll take, well, Niall cleaned it up. He said, our role is to make a recommendation. We have no authority to do anything. So we would, the motion is to recommend that the park board endorse a, a, an action of delaying the one, two cart policy for at least one month to allow time for the information that we've discussed to be collected. We don't, we don't have the authority to do anything, but if we, and, and if that motion is adopted, I hope it gets on the park board agenda. Sometimes it does, sometimes it doesn't, but, but that then discussion moves to the park board. But meanwhile, there's an issue about policies being made without it being vetted before, this speaks to the relevance of this committee, but that's the second issue. Anyway, that's what the motion is. Make a recommendation to the park board that the policy to return to two rider carts be delayed for a month.
Okay, I will, I'll go around and we'll vote singularly. So I'll start and I'll vote nay. Moving right down the list here, let's go with Dale.
How about I?
Nancy? Sorry Nancy, I think you're muted.
You're still muted.
You're muted.
Sorry, 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 sorry. Nay.
Okay, two nays to one aye. Michael?
I vote nay.
Three nays to one aye. Niall?
Hi.
Three nays to two ayes. Richard?
Hi.
Okay, three nays to three ayes. Now what?
Motion fails.
Okay.
Well, as an afterthought, we need to talk about where this body fits into policy decisions made by the department. Our important decisions that if we're gonna have a role as a golf advisory committee, you just said, we don't have a role. The department can do whatever it wants. And this is a big issue. This isn't just some minor thing about you're gonna change the tires on a golf cart. This is a big deal. But they're making it without our input. Without a report about why they're doing it, establishing, as Richard eloquently said, there are elements to be considered here, made without that information. I just, that's troubling, but that's, you know, it's the story of the golf advisory committee, so.
Hey Colin, I've got a question for you. How many, how many players do you think tomorrow are gonna opt into the second cart with the single rider?
With the, I mean, how many people are gonna pay the extra amount? Probably one or zero.
Okay, so it sounds like.
There might be a handful.
But we, but we won't know till the, I mean, if tomorrow a bunch of people do it and then we probably do need, and they, and we have some complaints, we probably might need to revisit it, but if no one says anything and no one pays the extra amount, then you know, then maybe the other way, so.
Yeah.
Okay, are we dropping, are we dropping the requirement for masks in the clubhouse?
No.
Nope, no.
Why, why, why don't we do that? Why don't we do that too?
Because I'm sure the mandate that they are copying that, that we are required to be used of.
But the mandate is something we're not taking into consideration. Just so everybody knows, I know we took a vote, but because it's the law and because I was a prosecutor for 21 years, I am gonna follow up on it. And if it hasn't changed, I intend to go to the county, to go to the city, to request the this be ironed out in, in whatever protocol they've set up. Because it isn't an option to obey the law. That, that is the law. And if it hasn't changed, we don't have the right to change it. Period.
Alright. Alright, let's move forward. That was fun. Anybody have a first? Nancy, go ahead.
Well, I just wanted to, your, the, the reports from the pros, I just wanted to say that I, you can tell that there was thoughtful consideration into these items and eye opening, like you said Eddie, but just, I thought, very good ideas. A number of these things can be implemented without financial implications. I, I appreciated what, what I saw in these recommendations and suggestions. So I think that as a group, I'm looking forward to us being supportive of a good amount of those things. Maybe not everything, like remodeling a clubhouse may not happen right away, but.
You don't, you don't wanna write that check.
We can work on it.
Yeah, I'll do that. And then the other thing, I wanted to go back just a moment. On the announcements section, we said we had none, but I believe there's a pretty big elephant in the room. Do you want to make that an announcement?
I guess we could.
Oh, you nailed it Nancy. Welcome to the GAC.
I was gonna do it under the president's update, but
Oh, sorry.
I think everyone is well aware. Mr. Hendricks has decided to pursue greener pastures, if you will. And that's all I know. So.
Okay, that was all that I had heard too. So I thought it was just a basic announcement if there wasn't more.
Sure.
It would be a good follow up that. What is the management scenario in his absence? Is there an interim? Is there a, is there a line of authority here that we should know about?
Dale, I think we, we have a meeting Tuesday. And with Mr. Houtman, and I assume that will be a topic. To get some sort of direction as we go forward now.
Awesome. Nancy, thank you for bringing up the wishlist items. I, I just wanted to make sure that this didn't fall on deaf ears. You know, they, they put a lot of work, a lot of effort into this. They see it every day. I didn't want to just bypass it and say, well, until, until the next guy comes in or whatever. So I, I wanted to make sure that we are hearing and seeing what you guys need. And we certainly appreciate your efforts in doing so. So.
Will this go to the park board? Eddie?
What's that?
Will this wishlist go to the park board?
We can certainly bring it up at the park board meeting.
At least there's an authoritative body that
Yeah.
simply telling us and just like, kind of blowing in the wind, but I think it should be taken, the park board should be definitely made aware of all these lists.
And I, I didn't check to see who was copied on the initial email. They could very well be copied on that. If not, Penny, let's make sure that the park board members receive the pros wishlist as well.
I'll get that out tomorrow morning.
Thank you.
Go ahead. Maybe, maybe a next step. Go ahead. Maybe, maybe a next step might also be to attach some financial considerations to those ideas. Uh, initial cost and, and possible benefit. So we do things, we look at it as in a, from a business perspective, which has been largely absent in previous, uh. Marketing discussions, uh, some of those things all need to direct into a better profit margin for us. Uh, Eddie, you said you're a business consultant, you understand that. Just to say things that we want to do for the sake of doing them, we can't do that anymore. But there are great ideas that have great potential to enhance the revenue of the, of the golf division and. But I'd like to see that accompanied with, you got an idea, follow it through to say, what's it going to cost to implement it? And what's the potential for return?
Yeah, if you guys, Colin, Keith, if you guys, you know, see a ball wash that you've been keeping an eye on or a. Golf mat and a net that you've been keeping an eye on, whether it's on eBay or, or golfworld.com or whatever. Feel free to link that, um, and, and that'll, you know how government works, it can be slow. I think that would seriously pick up the pace on some of those things.
Yeah, something that, that, uh, I'd like to add to the overall thinking is that. It surprises me, uh, that the golf division doesn't have some long range master list. Of improvements by golf course, by need. That is being reserved for, is being accounted for, is being estimated for. Uh, but from the, what I'm hearing is that this is just sort of a. Uh, by the seat of your pants deal, but there is no long-term plan for facilities, uh, improvement or. Uh, capital improvement over, um, over the long run. Am I, am I wrong about that? Or, uh, is there, is there a long-term, you know, plan to, um, replace golf carts? Um, take care of ball washers, get roofs fixed, improve air conditioning. Renew the re- refurnishing or redecorating of, uh, clubhouses. Is that, is that just something that just gets thrown around at a meeting like this? Or is there a long-term, uh, management plan to address those issues?
Nile, there is a long-term, uh, plan that Mr. Hendricks had brought forward, Mr. Houtman. That's millions of dollars identified for various improvements. I had asked in the previous meeting that they prioritize that and give us the, like the top three things that needed to be done. But was absent from that process was the involvement of the pros. That came largely from Mr. Hendrickson internally and the, I don't think the pros played a particular role in. Identifying that. On that list were some things like a $5 million clubhouse for Pawnee Prairie. A $4 million clubhouse for Clapp. So the list was a little bit bogus, uh, in terms of its, its credibility. Uh, but that was, there is a list like that Nile that identifies some of this more significant. Infrastructure problems. Uh, is that not true Keith? You've seen that?
No, I, I haven't seen.
But I'll say the pros were not involved in the compilation of that, and that's why I suggested their ideas be brought to the table along with that.
So is there, is there a, um, there's a plan, or I mean, there's a list. But is there a plan? Is anybody taking the lead in making that part of the capital improvements debate within the council or the park board?
No.
Um, this is Emma, if I may, um, I mean, I can't speak to as in-depth as Mr. Houtman can, but. Um, as far as my involvement goes, for the past nineteen and twenty, I've been worked here. Um, the CIP, which is Capital Improvement Projects for the city, um, it does not include golf. So all the CIP projects we have in place, um, is for recreation and park maintenance and forestry. Um, so the reason golf pros are not involved, my assumption is if it's not for golf course, then they wouldn't involve golf pros. Um, and I can, um, pass on the information or probably Eddie will regarding the CIP project details. So how it works is there's a long-term plan and it's a short-term plan. And every year all directors meet and then discuss priorities. So there is a plan and then once, um, it gets approved through the, the council and, um, the management. And then they can start initiative funds. So there is a process to it for sure. Does it, I mean.
Emma, is the list.
We're not, we're not privy to those dollars anyway, are we?
I'm sorry, can I say that again?
As an enterprise fund, we are not privy to any of those dollars, are we?
Correct, correct. That's the, that's the, that's the reason behind it. You're absolutely, you know, correct on that. That's the reason.
Hey Emma.
Golf internal long-range plan, which I, I don't know. But I'm sure Troy has taken input from all of us to kind of form what we needed to move forward.
For anything regarding golf, um, not CIP per se, I mean, yes. Um, or does it answer a question, um, Nile or Eddie or, um, Mr. Goder about CIP? So CIP is not for golf essentially. That's, that's, that's just the thing.
Hey, I have a question on that. I'm just asking as somebody who, who doesn't know, just trying to understand. Um, so the CIP, City Improvement Projects, the improvement, what, what would it, what would it stand for again?
Uh, it's Capital Improvement Projects.
Capital Improvement Projects. So the city or the, the golf was just called under the park board, but are not privy to any of the CIP funds. Is that correct?
Um, I, yes, it sounds correct to me, but I would check with Houtman just before Eddie.
And I would, on the back end of that, I would be curious, is there any other park entity that is excluded from the CIP? Or is it just the golf, uh, just the golf?
It's enterprise. The nature of the funding is, is, is not, I mean, not to say it wasn't before. I'm not too familiar with previous years, but based on the record, you know, there were funding in the past for golf. Um, not like this obvious in the way, um, but I can gather some details on, um, what kind of involvement golf has. And then on CIP and then submit through Houtman, um, and then he can talk more in depth. I just want to give a basic understanding of CIP, but Houtman definitely is more of the expert.
Okay, well, I'm just curious. It'd be interesting to see the breakdown.
Okay.
Yeah.
Actually is on the, uh, city website. If you guys want to, go to richard.gov and then go to the financials, uh, finance department. The CIP project is, is on a website.
Okay, Emma, can you, at some point, uh, at some meeting in the future, be able to, to bring us the. Match up these, uh, items that the pros have listed for us today. With what long-term plans exist to address those.
I can work, I can work with Houtman on that. I, I'm the accountant, so I don't, I mean, there's certain things, it's about my authority.
Just what, what already exists without ha- without having to start something new, but just whatever exists currently.
The current list for CIP, yes, yes, we can do that.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Emma.
Yeah, hopefully it was helpful.
It was. Thank you. Um, moving forward, about five o'clock. Um, item E is the first T update if available. Um, I don't want to sit here and throw around allegations and hearsay, and this is what I've heard and those type of rumors. Um, so if anybody's got anything hard and fast on this first T update. Um, please feel free, if not, if it's rumors, if it's something that you've heard from a buddy, please keep it to yourself. I don't think this is the medium for that. Okay. See none, no continuation of prior business. Uh, knocked out my president's update already, so we can adjourn. Thanks, everybody.
Love you guys.
Okay.
Good seeing you, Michael.
Yep, thank you guys.
Our, our next meeting? No? Okay.
Bye.
Bye.
Bye.